Hi. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Okay, we really got one item for discussion, consideration, and when I was at Jeff City, the legislative conference, we had a state rep from District 105, Colin Welling Camp, and he went over his different bills that were in committee, and one of them that kind of stuck out to me, and I'm urging the board to pass a resolution to urge the state senators and the state representatives to support Missouri House Bill 1461, which would create a soil erosion and control fund that what it basically is, is he gave a talk on how subdivisions have problems with soil and erosion, specifically creeks that run through subdivisions. And he was very clear that we cannot spend taxpayer dollars on private property. We do not have our own property. Go fix somebody's backyard because they have an erosion problem. So he said they get it all the time. They even come to the state level looking for money. And so he's he's the author drafted this bill to put together a fund that HOAs can borrow from it at a very low interest rate. He said something like a bond rate. So when it comes to soil erosion throughout subdivision, it's the HOA's responsibility or accumulative homeowners to fix the problem. So this gives them a revenue source that they could borrow from, fix problems. Questions? I mean, questions or comments?
Uh, no, I do have a question. I was looking at that, and thank you for that. Okay, first question is, like, how way did they should make this? Access something? I don't know. I don't have a way to do something. I'm mad. I think they took, how much was the loan? They took thousands or something? Wind of metals? It was like, it was a lot. Because is there I'm not saying you're not the person put out.
Yeah. I think if there was, I don't think the state's willing to hand out money, because he was talking about how extensive throughout the state these problems. Basically, that he doesn't own the property. By the way, no. No. Was not mentioned at all. Yeah. Could be, but it wasn't mentioned any somewhere. Yeah.
I'm trying to ax on this question. Um, those meanings are very but is there a way interest rate? I'm making everything right now.
Yeah, no, and I get what your
Sorry, everybody.
mind is reeling. And I mean, prime example is the O ditch along Town Square Boulevard. I don't know. They own that. The city offered to buy that and take it on. They refused. They voted no. They did not want the city to have. That's their problem. I mean, they need to fix that, and it's going to take a considerable amount of money to fix. So areas where it's actually working into the bank of the the district. It's a matter of time before it's fixed.
My last, my last statement, and I'll be quiet after that. Financial burden for just
Well, I mean, just my subdivision where I'm at now, Kemble Village, for example, we moved in four years ago. Our monthly HOA is up to almost 400 because of insurance costs covering they cover the outside ground maintenance and expensive water bills. All of it's gone up in just four years. I mean, it's a considerable amount of money. So if it is, as I said, if it is a real problem where it's encroaching someone's property to where it's coming to huge damage, then it may need to be looked at to be fixed. But if it's not, if it's just I don't know, taking trees, taking things, taking whatever, and I'll say this, after, after his talk, I pulled him aside and I, and I mentioned and he says, how far is it from the house? I said, quite a distance. Said, no, not to worry about it. But it shouldn't be a concern. So anyway.
Buddy, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I have a question because I was looking at item number three, a homeowners association must pass an assessment to the homeowners before qualifying for a loan as specified in the bill. So in our instance, we know that subdivision that's not going to be identified has been they had a special assessment. So what I'm wondering is if they have a special assessment, what are they saying if you're, if you're cost is a hundred thousand and you're going to have a special assessment for 50 or something? Because it's like, well, why would you have a loan if you're passing on the special assess?
Well, the special assessment monthly rate, you would calculate with the loan payment lessen the financial burden of the homeowners to do it over time, or they would pay it at special assessment over time to pay the loan back instead of upfront, you know, all a big chunk of money.
Yeah, this doesn't say anything about lump sum or anything like that, or a certain amount of it talks about the loan amount may not exceed 80% of the total costs. But I didn't know if they drilled down to that information. Sounds like maybe not because it would have been a document. That was purposefully there.
Anything else?
Aren't there easements on creeks, just like there are, or like on this road? So, I mean, who owns the creek? We, the owners, homeowners don't. I mean, we have a creek in Lewis, that goes through Lewis and Clark. The homeowners don't own that creek. And
So it's a rubber that keep flowing. Kayaks and go when it going through the middle of somebody's property. Little sign, little, all right. The purple, purple paint, whatever, right on the bank. And it says, we're not allowed to get out of here. There are areas where you can't. It's like government. Certain ones where it goes through certain properties. But I don't know what department it is. Frequent avenue. Do a kayak on it. The homeowner can't.
I just wondered, I mean, we don't maintain Dardine Creek that comes through ours. We don't.
Well, we did, well, we don't maintain the creek. We maintain
We don't have that, so you have us weak to brush, but I just, I, I don't know. Either way, I think it puts a real burden on the HOA. And I think anytime the HOA has to go to the homeowners and ask for money, you know, I mean, it's, it's a battle and retention ponds, I don't know that this would cover a retention pond, but retention ponds are the biggest problem for HOAs. And, you know, after a while, the silt builds up and then the banks start to erode and even to put that refraff, whatever the stones are, that's expensive. We had to do that. And so I just, I don't know if that would be covered in this either.
It's a, if it's a
All right.
Everybody else is going to have to, so I'll add a comment too, and just, I understand what you're saying. And while, I think that for me, it seems like this just gives ways of options to mitigate more than have to do, but it's like this is just adding options. Um, one thing I didn't hear about, maybe it was covered, but if you're a homeowner and you're on a creek to access the funds well or privately at hundreds of feet.
I think you can. Amendment to it that an individual, if it went to, yes.
Yeah, because I could see how residents within, within certain parts of Garden Prairie that have 10 acre lots over by Garden Prairie. There is erosion they could potentially like specifically in our city, if you might. And there's no HOAs, as far as I know, for some of them, pardon me. So that was kind of my only addition is that HOAs are one, but having a 3.5% interest loan to sort of mitigate erosion, having a larger property and a homeowner that's not part of an HOA. I'm still supportive of it. I think it's good, providing our residents with options. Yeah, we're a little pressed for time, right?
Had all the time on, in the world right now.
But, um, Mayor, can you
Okay, essentially, you meet with the Missouri Municipal League and well, I mean, you know, we met and then they go over, they have an agenda of what bills to support or reject, okay? And specific ones, and then you go over to the Capitol and go to, well, there, there could be committee hearings, it could be different things that you would go to and voice your either supporter opposition on. Which they do this once a year and each session. Just once a year, the MML does. I encourage you to go. I mean, I've gone to everyone and I think this one was originally scheduled, postponed to later because of the weather. But had to miss the first. Always, you always get a better understanding of what's happening and how it affects you. Most of the bills that we support are, are typically ones that directly impact Like we did, several got canceled. Another thing I thought was interesting, we had a MoDOT rep that talked about all the improvements are going to do with Highway 40 70. That whole interchange there be 70, that's going to be completely say, a long time? I'm thinking, how can you get that done before? Hey, anything else? You might need to talk about anything else?
A resident reached out to me about chicken coops and really rustic looking structures. And I know Jeff was going to go over and inspect it, and I'm wondering if we could ask Jeff for maybe some feedback that did you get an opportunity to go see the chicken coop? And it didn't smell bad because she was saying it smelled bad. It is. It only has to be two tenths of an acre. Crazy. Yeah, that's not much at all. I think, and her's this particular lot, I think is point two. So it does make, I know, shock, I know. That's what, yeah. But it's not, it's the state, it's the state. No, it's not one acre.
State law.
Because this, yeah.
The city can override that, the state by
The city can.
I'm pretty sure it's one acre for, for Hennings. Is it? Look it up.
Oh, I had an email. In fact, yeah, Kathy said it.
Well, you know, here's the problem I have with it is I have two tenths of an acre. My house takes up almost two tenths of the acre. I have no yard. So where am I going to put a chicken coop that isn't up on my patio or isn't up against my, the back fence? There's something that talks about and the line, the line of the property. But my point is, if we let it go to two tenths of an acre, there are a lot of houses in this city that have, their lot is two tenths of an acre. But by the time you put the house on it, you don't have any room.
Can I time out here a minute? I think the two tenths of an acre is
Yes, but I'm saying that's why I think we need to do more.
We already have an ordinance in place because I called sure on this, right after it was passed. You said that the city, if you have an ordinance in the city that was it already just I got several calls right after this was passed. And I'm almost certain, I mean, I looked it up, it was like one acre for chickens in Garden Prairie. And there's so many feet set back, you know, off the property. Specific to Garden Prairie. It's in our pet ordinance, talks about hogs, cats, all that, but there is a section in this particular that's, that's two biggest things. One or more. The one off of Henning Road there where the people were complaining, they had the neighbors that were fighting. And they were, and the argument was it was 0.99 acres. It wasn't one acre on the plaque. So the neighbor was saying it's not one acre. They had chickens. And I remember that was when the former mayor and we all decided, no, we're going to let her, let them have the chickens, 0.99, you know, acres. So yeah, right off of Welland Springs Road there, you know, that one drive that goes up and there's like two houses side by side. Then
It is, but the use regulations set forth in R1A were filed were allowed to keep, kept in R1A. However, if there's R1A that's don't have a hard acreage requirement except for Rooster Private. So there's not a hard acreage requirement except to say that it has to be in R1A, which is acre, but it may have not plus.
People with, with the state statute are not allowed to have chickens. Or an R1A. If she has, if she's not in R1A zoning. What do you think, Kim? What is it? Isn't there specifics that, you know, so many feet off of the property lines? So
And again, I'm going off of zoning about the chicken.
I remember right that pet ordinance was something that we just adopted from county county raise. I mean, saying we adopted that as a whole praise on what I remember. So that's St. Charles County's rule. Copy and paste. Given the circumstances of talking about your sense for us, what we have and just kind of bring this back to recommendation. More or less our rules just align. But we're right. Yeah, well, now we got the state.
If I may suggest, there are a couple of different issues that we're dealing with. If I may suggest, there are a couple of different issues that we're dealing with.
Let me just clear it up a little bit, it sounds like.
Right, and you know, I just wanna, I system with all of them would have been a suggestion. I would like to.
Down by there at five in the morning, super. Now I'm just gonna say, you go by there at five in the morning, you know, it'd be a Yeah.
Hey, we're gonna move on and uh, cuz we got an issue, we wanna go into a executive session, closed session. Uh, we might as well do it now than, you know, uh, the regular meeting. But let's uh, let's go on to uh, item number two, review of the uh, regular agenda. Is there any questions on what's on the regular agenda? Let's move into staff communication, city attorney. City engineer? Uh, city minister. You don't think cockfighting is the way to go? I mean, it's Yep.
I know, but I wanna say thank you for everything. I was, I actually appreciate it. I'll do it. Thanks for coming.
So, so Captain, I'm glad to know that she picks up on your phone call and one or two rings. She puts me on hold, I guess, while she's talking to you. It's either a meeting or talking to Captain Hunt. It's, you know, so.
Okay, and then Tom, if you could turn the camera to, to for me, I just have a couple of quick, really quick slides in along, you take thirty seconds. Well, that's not what's on my screen, so I'm trying to figure out why. Before it was oh, for heaven's sakes. Why would
Is that her? Is that what she wants? Her?
I've got it, but I'll try again. Open it back up. Oh, there we go. Okay. Uh, so I just wanted to share with the board that some volunteers for, and, and our, our residents, that volunteers from Missouri Botanical Gardens and Great Rivers Greenway were out today. The staff, this morning, obviously, uh, to plant trees and flowers um, in Barrett Haven Park. So fifteen trees were planted in the park and those beautiful flowers that you see there in the photos. The only other um, update I had was the uh, Easter egg hunt is Saturday, April nineteenth. A little different this year as we are asking for registrations. That's so we can plan by age group and have enough eggs for everybody. Um, our sponsors, I just wanted to note, are Children's Lighthouse, Community Living, NHC St. Charles, People's Savings Bank, and Pizza Ranch. The egg hunts are staggered by age group and start at ten AM.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion if you do want a closed session pursuant to our MO six ten points, section two. Okay, second by Mark, call in favor. Oh, Kim, call the roll. Hey, we're gonna go in closed session.